Welcome to the Oviedo City Council Meeting. It is Monday, December 1, 2014, approximately 6:30 PM. Councilman Britton will not be with us this evening. If everybody could please rise for the Pledge of Legions. And Councilwoman, why don't you lead us in it tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Mr. Cobb, do you want to do the honors?
I will.
Our regular stand-in isn't here this evening.
All right. Try to be the capable backup.
You're more than that.
Well, if you'd like to join me, just go to, go to the Lord in prayer. Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for this wonderful town that we call home. Thank you for our council and the hard work that they give to the citizens of this city. Thank you for our staff. Please be with us tonight and let our work be your will. Please give us guidance, give us wisdom, let our words be yours. Please be with our community, Lord, especially during this time, in these holidays. Let us remember that giving is better than getting. Please bless us, Lord, in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Brian. All righty. First order of business, we have the election of the Presiding Officer and the Deputy Mayor. Let's attack Presiding Officer first. I'll take nominations.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman.
I'd like to nominate the Mayor to continue on as Presiding Officer.
Second.
Any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll close nominations. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Nominate Flat Stanley. He's going to nominate Flat Stanley.
You should have. Flat Stanley would have done a great job. All right. Next order of business is the election of Deputy Mayor. I'll take nominations.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman.
I'd like to nominate Councilwoman Drago.
Second.
We have motion, we have a second. Any other nominations?
No, sir.
Flat Stanley? All righty, I heard a motion and a second for Stanley. We'll take them in the order that I had gotten them. All in favor of Councilwoman Drago, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Flat Stanley's out. All righty, congratulations. Keep being Flat Stanley.
Thank you. Who is Stanley?
Uh, Stanley...
I've never seen him.
Flat Stanley is a project from Sophia at Stentstrom Elementary School. She sent me a Flat Stanley and asked me to travel around with him. You take pictures of him, you know, with whatever you do, and then I have to make a little poster board of his travels and send it back to her. So I have homework.
I got, how cute.
It's like a pen pal kind of thing.
Yeah.
They take it and they have kids, they send them, and they're sent to family members or friends in other countries, other states, and then you're supposed to take pictures of them and send them back.
So they, their experience, what you're experiencing and...
Well, he has an exciting week this week because he's at the meeting tonight. He has stuff to sign later. He's going to the Oviedo ER, one-year anniversary luncheon tomorrow, Metro Plan, the Chamber Luncheon, and then the second Chamber Luncheon on Friday. So he's busy.
Only if he's good, you said.
That's right. Only if he's good will I take him to that one.
And I think that all those events were just, he was just explaining to you what you'll be doing when he's there.
Oh, I have a first order of business in my email that I received today. Evidently, there's a gentleman in Italy who needs the Mayor to come because there's a plot to murder the Pope or something. I don't know.
I'll go.
You'll have to pay for the trip, though. You okay with that? I don't think Mr. Cobb would authorize that.
That's not budgeted.
All right, let's move along here. We've got a short meeting. Next item, we have ceremonial items. This is new officers introductions. So Chief, I will turn this over to you. Don't mind Stanley. Sounded like it was, huh?
At this time, I'd like to call up our new officers. And if you could join us down here?
Sure, of course.
Flat Stanley's on the move. These are our newest officers. They were sworn in last Monday, and I'm going to hand the microphone to them and let them introduce themselves and just tell you a little bit about themselves.
Hi, my name is Brittany Argentine. I grew up in the Oviedo/Wintersprings area. I graduated from Florida State University with a bachelor's, bachelor's degree. I graduated with a bachelor's degree in criminology, and I attended the academy up in Tallahassee at Pat Thomas. And I moved back here in June to work for a local agency.
My name's Carlos Marrero. I'm originally from San Juan, Puerto Rico. I moved to Oviedo in 1996, and I lived here until 2006 when I joined the military. I served as an Army paratrooper. And then after ETS, I was a manager at Publix, and I just decided I need a little bit more excitement, so here I am.
Our office is excited. My name is Darrell Solomon. I was born in Atlanta, Georgia. I grew up in Orlando, Florida. I attended West Orange High School over in Winter Garden. I ultimately ended up getting a football scholarship to University of Delaware, and I later transferred to Florida Atlantic University where I received my bachelor's in criminal justice. When I moved back to Orlando, I worked for FedEx Freight as well as the Mentoring and Motivating Youth of America Company. I attended Valencia's Police Academy. I graduated in May, and here I am now.
I just thought I'd mention that when we opened the applications, we had over 100 applications for the position, and these three were the ones that were selected to fill those, uh, those spots.
Guys, welcome to Oviedo, Orlando, Chicago. I reminded her, I told her. Mr. Cobb, that is the end of the ceremonial items on the agenda. Do you have anything else for us this evening?
Uh, no, sir.
All righty. Moving along, then, our first item of business is the approval of our minutes for the November 17th, 2014 Regular Session. I'd like to entertain a motion to do so.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, Mr. Mayor.
Nope, nope, approval of minutes.
Oh, you're at minutes, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the November 17th meeting.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion?
No, sir.
Hearing none, call the vote. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item number four, that is the public comment portion of the meeting. I do not have any written request. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to address council at this time? Seeing none, I will close the public comment, and now I will move on to the consent agenda. So Councilman Henkin?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion?
Um, no discussion, but I did just want to say that the City Council and Mr. Cobb, and we're all very happy for that additional day after New Year's for our employees. Well deserved. You guys worked really hard, so enjoy that day off. That's a new one for us, so happy for all the employees and staff.
Kind of nice the way it all landed this year.
Yeah.
And Connie, good job putting it all together, so just wanted to mention that.
Anything else?
No, sir.
I'd like to pull off item number 10, if I may, and make it number 11A, just for a brief discussion.
Okay.
Motion or agree?
Yes, sir.
Second or agree?
Mm-hmm.
All righty. Anything else on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll call the vote on items five through nine and 11. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Moving along to item number 11A, Oviedo on the Park Parking Lot 5 Design. Mr. Cobb, can you give us a brief introduction?
Yes, Mayor. This is a request for the City Council to authorize a work order to Vanassi-Hongan in Breslin, VHB, in the amount of $65,184 for the design of a parking lot on Lot 5 of Oviedo on the Park. This is, we've been looking at various ways to utilize that property. We feel that in the initially, this is the best purpose for that property, is to use it as a parking lot, a public parking lot to service the park, as well as other, other areas of Oviedo on the Park. There is adequate funding within the FY 14-15 budget. We recommend that the City Council adopt ordinance, Resolution Number 2936-14.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Can I extend a motion on 2396-14?
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, motion is second. Any discussion?
Go ahead, you can, you brought this up.
No, go ahead. Mr. Cobb, I'm just, would like a little clarification. I'm looking at this work order, and I know we've had a lot of discussion on the type of parking lot, what we're going to do with that land, but, you know, when I just look at $65,184 to design a gravel parking lot, it just strikes me as possibly high. And I'm just, would like an explanation or somebody to walk us through, A, why it's so high, and B, what are our alternatives are.
Okay, actually, I'd like to have Mr. Wyatt come up.
Thank you. Bobby, how are you?
Good, sir. How are you all, city?
Excellent.
Um, scope of services for the parking lot is actually, there's four parts to it. There's a design, there's a survey, geotech, and there's actually a contingency of about $11,000 in there for lighting, because we're not quite sure what we want to do yet. We want to make sure that it's correct design. And what we've done, we've built in for this parking lot, is, it's the ultimate design, if that makes sense. We want to phase it, because we know we may not have enough money in the first phase to actually blacktop it. It may have to be something stabilized similar to what the Baptist Church has, but we want to go ahead and design it all the way. And that's why the design may seem higher than normal. But keep in mind that the design itself is only about $43,000 of the total price. Then you have the survey, the geotech. Geotech's important, because northwest part of the site is lower, we have to fill it up, put a retaining wall on the backside, have to have that designed, plus the ultimate paving design has to be recommended by the geotech. So it is a little elevated for what we normally do, but it is, like I said, for an ultimate design.
But that's all, a great explanation, but wouldn't the ultimate design eventually, if it's needed, wouldn't there be a structure of some sorts there?
Eventually, yes, sir.
But that becomes another design later.
Well, I want to have it actually, whatever minimal I can do now to have it incorporate a possible structure in the future, it'd be in this design.
Now, I know there's a landowner to the north who had talked briefly with, I think, maybe Mr. Cobb, about a connector possibly from the north down to the south. Is that still on the table, or is that gone now?
On the west side of the property...
On the north, on the north side of our property.
On Lot 5?
Yeah.
I'm not familiar with that, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir, Mayor. The answer to your questions, yes.
Yes.
That's still in discussion, yes.
Will this parking lot be able to accommodate that?
Yes.
Certainly thinks so, yes, sir.
I, I'm not even saying that we would do it. I just know that the conversation was, the question was asked, I should say. But it just seems excessive. What, what about your professional opinion? I mean...
My professional opinion is, it's, it's, it's price of doing business. And it's not, I mean, the, the way they do it, it's hours and times an hourly rate. Look at the hourly rate, it's not anything outrageous. Number of hours, I looked at it, the heavy, heavy parts of it are in the design. There's several components related to design. There's site layout, there's landscape design, there's actual site design, stormwater design, stormwater permitting, there's post-design, which is part of the construction, they'll have to be available onsite, you know, to answer questions.
So you're going to get a full, full set of construction docs permitted, ready to go?
Yes, sir, spoiler plate.
That's all I have.
Yeah, the lighting, when you say the lighting, that's the lighting design.
Yes.
You have $11,000 for lighting.
Contingency, and understand, that doesn't mean I'm going to spend it all. It means it's just available if I, however much I need.
So it's $43,000 for the design, and then another contingency of $11,000...
Yes, sir.
For lighting design.
Plus survey, plus geotech. Gets it to $65,000.
Right.
It's four pieces, really.
Bobby, we have, you know, this, this company on this continuing services agreement. Do we have other companies on that agreement that are capable of doing this?
We have five.
Did you ask the other ones for a...
Those that we done, we can't shop them.
Can't do that.
You can't shop them when you have the continuing, you just have to pick one?
We use VHB on this, for Oviedo on Park, because they are, they've been the resident engineer onsite from the beginning.
So what would you do, if you can't, if you can't use the other five, how would you put out a competitive bid on us if you wanted to?
We would have to do an RFQ, or RFP.
Tell me why we can't use the other, ask the other ones for a bid, if you just pick one, why is that not allowed?
We can, but based on my experience and what I like to do, I'd like to go with the most experienced engineer for the design, and it happens to be VHB for this one.
Well, I mean, they might be the most experienced, but wouldn't it be prudent? I mean, I, I hear we, there's a lot involved in this. Your explanation was fine, I'm good, I'm not giving you a hard time, but how hard would it be to ask the other four for a bid, just to get a...
I'm not sure we can.
I'm not yet, I would...
Mr. Henkin, the, the, the engineers that we have under contract, they were hired, or we have the contract based on the Consultants Negotiation Act. And basically, the rules are, is that you go to the one consultant, that they compete when they're doing their RFQs.
Okay.
Okay? That's when they compete. And what it says is that you can't make them compete after you've got them under contract.
Gotcha.
So you go to the first one, and you ask them for a scope, and you, you review it. If you find it acceptable, you go forward. If you don't find it acceptable, then you say, okay, I'm not going to use this one. You go to the next guy. Or, and then you can go to the third guy, but the thing is, is you can't go back.
Now, is that like a state rule or federal rule? I mean, whose rule is that?
It's a statute.
It's a statute?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I mean, I think there's a lot into this. I hear with amazed, I mean, I'm okay with it, because it's a lot of work, but I mean...
We could bid it out, but that's, I said, that's, then, that's a whole new process that we have to go through.
I can take the design back to the engineer and try and, I mean, whittle it and get it down more. I can, I can make it just one phase, just the initial part.
I think there's a lot of stuff you can get if you want.
Well, no, 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 no.
I guess I will tell you my experience working with this particular consultant, we're, we're getting a fair price. Compared to our other consultants, we're getting a fair price.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
I have one. When do you anticipate it to be done?
I would have to look back in the actual scope for the duration. I think it's about four, four to five months.
So it'll be done for the opening?
Yes, ma'am. I've got to try and time it.
They have six months as their number?
Exactly. It should take two to three months for design, and usually it's a month to finish up after that.
Okay.
Which we've all, we budgeted everything in this fiscal year.
Thank you, Bobby.
Anything else? Thank you, Bobby. Just try to keep it as low as you can. Motion on table is to adopt. Are there any further questions? Hearing none, call the vote. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Moving along, we have no public hearings, no first reading of ordinances. We do have a resolution, it's number 2927-14. It is a site development order for Forster Grove Subdivision. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for the City Council to approve a preliminary subdivision plan for a 94-lot, single-family residential development located on the east and west sides of Lee Avenue, approximately 437 feet north of County Road 426. The total land area of the subdivision is approximately 44.43 acres. The future land use designation of the subdivision is low-density residential. The zoning district of the subdivision is R1, single-family residential. The lot sizes within the subdivision will vary from 10,500 square feet to 20,000 square feet. The average lot size, average lot width is 81 feet, and some lots will be reaching a lot width of 100 feet. Just to give you an idea, the minimum requirements for R1 are an 8,500 square feet area, minimum lot width of 80 feet, and the front setbacks are based on whether it's the front of the house or the garage, it's 20 feet to the front of the house, 25 to the garage, a rear setback of 25 feet, and then a side setback of 8 feet. There is one requested deviation for this subdivision. It only affects lots 78, 79, and 80. It is a 0.5-foot deviation to the 8-foot side setback to allow a 7.5-foot side setback on lots 79, 78, 79, and 80. Concurrenty has been satisfied, and there is, there are a couple of conditions on the site development order. One is that the development will require the vacation of Lee Avenue, so there is a condition in the site development order that it's not officially approved until the, the vacation takes place. And then there's also three properties to the north that are affected by the vacation, and there's some documentation that must be provided to the acceptance of the city attorney regarding that, and that's another condition within it. The Development Review Committee and the Planning-Zoning Appeals Board both reviewed this subdivision, preliminary subdivision plan, and recommend approval. It's recommended that City Council adopt Resolution Number 2927-14.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. The applicant in?
Good evening, I'm Allison Turnbull with Holland and Knight, 200 South Orange Avenue in Orlando, here on behalf of the applicant. And we agree with staff's recommendation, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions?
I don't.
Quick one. Gated or not gated?
Seminal, I'm sorry.
Gated or not gated?
Oh, gated, I'm sorry, I thought you said gator or not gator. I'm seminal. It's gated. That's what I thought you said, too. Did you think that? I did.
I will talk into the microphone, gated or not gated?
Gated.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
That was great, though. And everybody wants to replay that? It will be on the internet tomorrow. Terrific. All right, this is a public hearing. I do not have any writ requests, so we will just move on. What is the pleasure of council?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman.
I'd like to make a motion, we adopt Resolution 2927-14.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call the vote. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. I still call Britton Deputy Mayor. Thank you, everyone. We'll give you all a minute to clear. Mr. Cobb, while they're clearing, just again, the issue with the iPads and the PSP plans, we can't open them.
Okay.
So, you know, I, I don't know what we're going to do or how we're going to address shrinking these down, breaking up the files, or, you know, really, what we need, at least in my, my view, is probably only three or four pages of, of the site plan. But, you know, again, just like last meeting, we can't open it. Or at least mine doesn't. I don't know if anybody else does.
Right.
Are there tablets that can open it?
Well, evidently, as Microsoft Surface did, but...
Yeah, this is opening it.
We're not going to make any decisions on tablets until we have software issues, I think, corrected. Is that what I heard?
I think that's, yes, I believe that's the case.
All right, so we'll just work around it as best we can.
Okay.
Or shrink it. I, I mean, I don't know if we're shrinking the PDFs enough.
I, I think there's ways that, especially from the standpoint of shrinking, that I think also, we can also go in and look at what are the pertinent pages. A lot of the detail pages you probably don't need, that we could look at what the pertinent pages are, and maybe that'll shrink it down.
If we could just take the extra step so we can open it up?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. All right, moving along, we are up to item number 15, that is the annual appointment to our boards. So we will just, let's go with the Police Pension Board first. There is one position open, and there is one person wishing to be reappointed. Can I have a motion?
motion to reappoint Catherine Leach?
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the vote. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. PZA Board, we have two positions up, two applicants, and one current member wishing to be reappointed. Let's attack the person who wants to be reappointed, is Mr. Sheridan. Is there consensus for that?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, can I have a motion?
Motion to reappoint William Sheridan to the PZA Board?
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the vote. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. We do have the vacant position from Tia Hughes, who's served the board very well for four or five years at least, right? Maybe longer? I think she moved to Lake Mary, I believe. So we wish her well, and we thank her for her service. We have two applicants. I'll take nominations.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman, everyone.
That's going to be the Deputy Mayor.
You know, that's it. Everyone. I'm just going to call you all Deputy Mayor.
Um, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Matthew Young.
Second.
Any other nominations? Hearing none, I will close nominations, and we have one nomination for Matthew Young. All in favor of Mr. Young, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Are you Mr. Young?
Yes.
Well, come on up. You know, looking around, I know everybody. When I see a guy that we don't know, I kind of figure...
Good evening.
We're going to have to get you a bigger chair, huh? Are we easing out Flat Stanley there?
I know my daughter had them as well.
Matt, welcome to the PZA. We appreciate you wanting to serve the city of Oviedo. Why don't you just tell us a little bit about yourself? I know we have your, your interest form, but why don't you just let the world know?
Sure. My name is Matt Young. I live here in Alafoya Woods. My wife and I have lived here since 2006. I've lived in Seminole County since 1982. Born in Indianapolis, Indiana.
You have planning experience, I saw.
Yep. I'm a civil engineer by trade, professional civil engineer. I've worked for the past 10 years with local firms, doing mixed-use, multifamily, residential, commercial, industrial. I also have surveying experience prior to that. I hope to be sitting for my survey board soon, so...
Good for you. Well, welcome.
That's a heck of a resume.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
And Matt, you might wanna just, uh...
Touch base with...
Touch base with Dr. Carrera right there, and, uh, she'll give you the skinny, get your contact information, and, uh, they'll get you all up to speed. I think they usually will have you come down, right? Isn't that what you usually do with the new members?
Sure.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Teresa, you get overwhelmed, there's a heck of a resume there, you know?
Good job.
You might have, Teresa, you might have a different position for this man. We, we could be back doing this again in just a couple of months. Alrighty, moving right along. Uh, look at that, we're at the end of the meeting. Mr. Cobb?
Uh, Mayor, I just want to, since we're not gonna have another meeting, wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Well, we appreciate that, same to you. Uh, moving along, we're up to Mr. Griggs' report.
Likewise, enjoy the family, enjoy the season.
Thank you, Lonnie. Now, Lonnie, where exactly is Jessup, Georgia?
Very close to the Okefenokee Swamp, and very far from everything else.
Now, did you notice Councilman Henkin knew that there was an anthrax stop there? Alrighty, well, uh, we, thank you, guys. Uh, let's see, reports, uh, we've just had, uh, on my first, we've got a whole bunch of events coming up. Hometown Tree Lighting is, uh, this Saturday at 5:30. I think it starts, uh, 6 o'clock, Santa arrives, and then he stays until, I guess, all the kids get pictures? Is that usually how it works, Drew? I know it's not your event, but, I mean, that's usually how it works. I've never seen, uh, Santa take off on any of the kids, so it's over at the Lawton House. Uh, we hope to see everybody out there, it's always a great crowd, that I will say. Uh, the following Saturday, we have, uh, the Hometown Holiday Parade, the Chambers Parade, uh, in conjunction with Snow Mountain. That is December 13th, uh, Saturday, over at Oviedo Mall. The parade starts at 4:00, Snow Mountain opens at 5:00, unless you buy a VIP ticket, uh, then it opens up at 3:30, and you get early access to the snow, correct? Alrighty, and you can buy those tickets at, I'm assuming, the Jim and Riverside, both? And how much are a VIP, VIP ticket? 20 for VIP, or it's about $5 or $10 for regular? Five?
I think it's, uh, five the day of, I think it is.
Okay, five or seven the day of, and that is always a very crowded event, so, um...
Kids love it.
That, that will have a lot of fun, and, uh, the newly-elected Deputy Mayor will have to go down the slide this year, backwards.
It's a rule.
It's a rule.
It's a rule.
You didn't know that?
I didn't know that.
No?
I'm sure I'm gonna learn a lot of rules, that were never in effect.
Oh, don't worry about it. You'll, you'll, you'll learn them as we go along. Santa Around Town, now that is an event here in the city of Oviedo that is always, uh, everybody always waits for that one. That starts on Monday, December 8th, runs through the week. I don't think any neighborhoods have changed dates this year. Chief isn't here to check with, uh, but I, I do believe that they're all the same. So whatever night Santa usually comes through your neighborhood, he'll be coming through again this year. The newer neighborhoods, I would just go to the city's website, I saw it posted, there was, the map is up there today. I saw something with all these holiday events, so just go to cityofoviedo.net, click on it, click on the route, it'll tell you what night Santa's coming through your town. That is always a lot of fun as well, and lots of peppermints get thrown, so we'll, uh, we'll see how that goes.
Especially on Friday nights in my house.
That's right. Councilman Henkin, we will get you...
Councilman Schenk loves to pepper my house, I have a lot of work to do this Saturday. It's ridiculous.
We just, uh, we get them in the lawn, not on the driveway, that's the trick.
Yeah, it's the key.
That, that, that's, that's the key, if you really want to...
I have a surprise for you this year, though.
That electric motor spitting out those...
You have a surprise with the hoses out there this year.
Last thing I have is, uh, I did announce this at the beginning of the meeting quickly, uh, it's the one-year anniversary for Oviedo ER this week. So, uh, it's hard to believe that they've been there a year already, open. They have their certificate of need, as we all know, and we know that they're working towards a full-service hospital in the near future. So, uh, if you see them, or anybody from Oviedo ER, they work very hard over there, we have to wish them well. With that being said, as everybody has said so far, this is our last meeting of December until the new year. I just wish everybody a happy and healthy holiday season. Uh, next up, we have, uh, the former Deputy Mayor, Stephen Schenk.
Just gonna walk out the door. Good night, everybody. Um, I echo all those comments and say, uh, happy holidays, Merry Christmas to everybody, have a safe, hot, New Year, and, uh, shop local if you can, hit the mall. Uh, the mall's doing well, with some, uh, new shops opened up, so you can get over there, uh, take a look at them, and I'll see you around town on all these events.
That is true. Thank you. Alrighty, and now we are on former Deputy Mayor, Stephen Henkin.
Well, I just have, uh, just, uh, two quick things. Um...
That is.
Good, uh, good year as Deputy Mayor. Councilman Schenk always does a good job, whatever he does, so that was really good, and congratulations to the new Deputy Mayor. Now, I know we've had, I think, one, two, three very fine female mayors, and I think, Brian, you might be, correct me, but I think Cindy will have, be the first female Deputy Mayor in the city's history, if you think back, I'm pretty sure.
And I don't plan on dying, so...
At least since I've been here.
Yeah, so that's, uh, congratulations.
Unless...
Thank you.
Yes, I think since I've been here, yes.
Yeah, so we'll be in good hands when the mayor gets his annual cold for two weeks, and all of that stuff, so it's all good, but congratulations.
Thank you.
And Merry Christmas to everybody. Staff, you're amazing. We don't know what we do without you, so have a great holiday, enjoy that extra day off. I know I will, so, good job. That's all I got, Mayor.
Current Deputy Mayor.
And thank you for your, um, your vote of confidence, and, um, anytime you need me...
I have a list for you, don't worry.
I know you do, I'll bet you do. Um, I guess all I have to say is Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy New Year. It's a pleasure to be part of the, of Oviedo and the family here, and I'm looking forward to another year. Um, I did want to mention that we did have, um, attend the Police Foundation fundraiser the other night. It was very well-attended, a lot of people from the community came out. So, Chief, did they raise a lot of money?
Uh, there was a, a donation that night for about $520, and I haven't heard what the 10% for now, I don't know.
Oh, great, great.
Great.
Very nice, thank you.
Great. Alrighty, Councilmember Britton isn't here, so we're gonna hear from Flat Stanley. Man a few words, we'll move on. Future meeting dates, we have Monday, January 5th, we have, uh, that's 2015, that's 6:30 PM regular session. We have Tuesday, January 20th, 6:30 PM, also a regular session. These are all regular sessions. Monday, February 2nd, and Monday, February 16th, all 2015. Again, happy holiday season to everybody, happy and healthy New Year. We will be back on January 5th, so set your DVRs, and, uh, Mr. Cobb, do you have anything else for us?
Actually, I do have two things, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Two events, uh, this month, uh, this, on the Sunday, the 7th, the Boys Town Tree Lighting. I believe it's at 5:30, I think, Count, uh, Santa arrives at 6:00.
And I never get to make that event, because I have another event that conflicts with it every single year.
And then I believe on the, is it the 20th, Mr. Bowyer? The 20th is breakfast with Santa, and this year, is it confirmed? It's confirmed, this year we're going to be partnering with Ale House and the Optimus Club. We're gonna be holding breakfast with Santa at the Ale House in the morning of the 20th.